All right, welcome to the City of Bellevue special virtual meeting for Thursday, June 4th, 2020. City Clerk, are you ready to do the roll call?
Yes.
Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse?
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale? Councilmember Lee?
President.
Councilmember Robertson?
President.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
And Councilmembers On?
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you everybody for coming to this last minute meeting. We're, next thing on the agenda is a discussion and a presentation and discussion of five resolutions. And Mr. Miyaki, do we have a staff presentation for this?
Sure, Sheriff Mayor, we have, I'm gonna just turn it over to Kathy Gerler, our city attorney, for a brief staff report. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and council members. As the councils aware, last Sunday, May 31st, numerous individuals descended into the downtown area of Bellevue. And while many of them were there to legitimately and peacefully protest as a result of the tragic killing of George Floyd by a police officer in Minneapolis, many individuals were also there to commit opportunistic acts of violence. And they were breaking into and looting the downtown stores, causing significant property damage and assaulting police officers and other members of the public. And because of those unfolding events in the downtown area, early the evening of May 31st, Mayor Robinson, under the authority granted to the mayor in the city code, issued a proclamation of civil emergency, declaring that a civil emergency exists within the city of Bellevue. That proclamation remains in effect today. And so during the existence of a proclaimed emergency, the mayor has the authority, under the city code, to issue emergency orders. And those emergency orders must be presented to the council for ratification and confirmation. And if they're not ratified and confirmed, they will be void. So what is before the council today are five emergency orders that have been issued by the mayor that are being presented for ratification and confirmation. Three of the orders are curfew orders, and two of them relate to prohibited items. And I will take up the three curfew orders first, and then pause, and unless Mary likes to do it differently, after, I'll talk about the curfew orders for a minute, then pause, allow the council to discuss and vote on those three, and then we'll do a brief staff presentation on the two prohibited item orders.
Okay, that sounds like a great idea. And when you are done presenting on the curfew, I'm going to give the council an opportunity to comment or ask questions. And I'll be asking in order of Councilmember Barksdale, Councilmember Robertson, Councilmember Stokes, Lee, Zon, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and then me. So go ahead, Kathy, thank you.
Okay, so just to briefly summarize, Resolution 9761 would ratify and confirm the first curfew order, which imposed the curfew from 5:30 PM on May 31st to 5:30 AM on June 1st. Resolution 9762 ratifies the second curfew order, which imposed a curfew from 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM, June 1st to 5:00 AM on June 2nd. And then Resolution 9763 ratifies and confirms the third curfew order that imposed the curfew from 5:00 PM on June 2nd to 5:00 AM on June 3rd. So those are the three curfew orders. They apply only in the downtown area, and they were curfew in the evening hours for those three nights. The fourth curfew order is not before you tonight, and we will need to be brought back at a future meeting for, presented for ratification and confirmation. So again, with that, I'm happy to take any questions, otherwise if the council wants to, can discuss and vote on those three resolutions.
Okay, so I'm gonna give each of you an opportunity to comment or question, starting with Councilmember Barksdale.
All right, thank you, Mayor Robinson. And just wanted to comment that I appreciate your leadership in lifting the most recent curfew. I understood why we put it in place at the time when there was the looting happening and so forth. I do just wanna say, as it pertains to curfews, and I'll be brief, you know, I think we wanna make sure that we're applying it when there's an obvious need, a credible threat that is, that is happening or about to happen, and be cautious about overextending those multiple days. The thing about protests is, you know, there's that, it's a public dialogue right now, and I think we wanna be, play an active role in that public dialogue in our community. And as we continue to grow, we're gonna have to continue to learn how to adjust to these events in the making. And so I just appreciate that. We are supporting and showing solidarity with fighting against racial and social and economic injustices, not only in word, but also in deeds. So I just, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Barksdale. Councilmember Robertson?
I support ratifying the curfews. I also am pleased that we lifted the other one, because when we discovered that there really were no longer credible threats. I hate to put these curfews in place, particularly because it creates a lot of headache and hassle for the people who live downtown. We have 10,000 people living downtown, and not allowing them to go out after work, to pick up groceries or whatnot, is a real hardship on them. On the other hand, if we're gonna have situations where we have a large criminal element coming and breaking windows, and throwing things at our law enforcement, and looting, then I think it's necessary. So I've been supportive of using them. I will support using them again if we need to. I just wanna make sure that we're circumspect in using them when needed, because they really do create a burden. And once the businesses are open more, it will create a burden on the businesses, because then they would not be able to have any customers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Stokes? I'm not hearing you yet.
All right.
There you are.
Yeah, thank you for the meeting and for being on top of this. I support, and the two comments were made earlier. I have some mixed feelings about this, and I think, I do want to say, I wish that there had been communication with council before today, and some discussion. And I thought we were gonna do that early, because there are differences between the days and the two times on that. And I think the concern is, how do we make that balance of protecting the public and taking action to alleviate the damage and serious unlawful activity? At the same time, and I understand our Lieutenant Governor and other people have raised questions about the somewhat clash with constitutional protection for people who are protesting, and kinda moving people out of the main area where you would come to protest. I think raises some serious questions we need to talk about, before this happens again. And I think that, in the unfortunate thing, the riot definition legally is, is pretty much three people start causing trouble, and that's, you can go on that. So again, it's just a balance on that, and I think we have to look at it in terms of, is putting curfew in place gonna cause more problems and more disconnect and more disruption in the area of the curfew than not? And obviously, police activity can occur in both. So I think it's a conversation we ought to have, and I think we also look at maybe bringing our code a little bit up to date, because it does include some things on firearms and stuff in there, they're obsolete, and a few others. So I think it'd be a good conversation for us to have, after we get through with all this, and kinda get out of this particular situation. But anyhow, I'm glad we moved forward and appreciate the meeting today. And I think, again, moving forward on any of these things, I think we need to have a better, more communication with council, and so we kinda know what's going on, and can keep making it clear that this is a council action, and also kinda help people who misunderstand and think the, you just mentioned the mayor in terms of their discomfort or unhappiness about a curfew being put in place. But I'm in favor of the vote of this.
Councilmember Lee? I cannot hear you yet.
Why don't I, okay?
You are.
Yeah, you can hear me now, thank you. This is something new to most of us, you know, we don't have this kind of experience. So I think it's important to have some conversation, and hopefully it doesn't happen again, but you know, I don't think that's possible, maybe wishful thinking. I think the question that was asked makes sense. You know, what are the consequences? We know that it's recommended to us, you know, by our staff, by police chief. And so obviously, we don't do things unless there's a reason. So because of threat from, you know, whatever that may be, when the threat will cause from the looters, but then, but by doing something with the root looters, there are other consequences we don't know of. So you know, we are all sort of making decisions short of having information, or lots of information. So the process is that we are recommended, I really appreciate the mayor willing to take that responsibility, say, we're gonna do this, and also rectifying council, it's important. But the situation unfortunately is, we do it afterwards. So I'm not, I'm just curious, what is the requirement, you know, to the city attorney? Do we ratify afterwards? How much time do we have to rectify it? Or should we not always, when we make decisions, we know beforehand, have some discussion, and then we, you know, authorize the mayor to make the, you know, public decisions or announcements? So how does that work? Is there a timeline requirement that we have to follow or meet?
So when there is an emergency, the way the code is structured, is it recognizes that there isn't always time, you know, for the entire council to be able to weigh in? So it authorizes the mayor in situations like this, or other emergencies, like last year when there was the snowstorm, and Mayor Chalmak had to, had to take in some emergency actions. It authorizes the mayor to be able to take emergency actions quickly, so that action can get done right away. But then what the code requires is for the orders that, that any mayor issues, any emergency orders under their emergency powers, those orders have to, at the earliest practicable time, be presented to the city council for ratification and confirmation. And so that's the process that we're, we're at now, is ratifying and confirming those orders.
Yeah, so the vagueness is the earliest practicable, that's challenging. Anyway, so that's the process, understood. And I understand during emergency, you have to act, so it's all good. That's the reason why perhaps, you know, we need to communicate as much as we can, do the best we can to get information to all affected people, starting with the council, and then starting with the public that may be affected, the people who may be, you know, in threat, business folks that may be affected, residents that may be affected, and people in general, the community that might be wondering, you know, what's happening? So I think these are the things we need to consider to do the best we can, and then to be able to explain, communicate to the public, so that, you know, we have a understanding, we don't need to be guessing why we do certain things. And that's the thing we are facing now, is people are asking us, you know, variously, why are we doing this, have questions involved. So I'm really glad that we're doing this, and this is probably the opportunity for us to explain. But I think we probably should have explained that sooner rather than later. So with the situation it is, we have to rely on a professional and professional judgment, recommendation made to us. And, you know, we have to trust the people that we rely on to make the decisions. But obviously, there's also the opportunity for us to have some discussion as elected officials, and ultimately, we are making the decisions, the official responsibility rests with us. So we need to understand that, have a conversation. If we're gonna do it now, we need to do it in the future. So I would, I would support this, but you know, I think we all share, I hope that we all share everything that everybody has been saying, and we need to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Zon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for your leadership in establishing the curfew in the emergency, and then now lifting the extended curfew. You know, I agree with the comments made earlier, that curfews are really for use in absolutely emergencies. I appreciate the feedback that we heard from the community about their concerns regarding curfews. These are really unprecedented times, and acknowledging the pain in our community, the injustice to George Floyd and many, many others, the ability for protesters to be able to stand together in solidarity against injustice, as well as to protect the businesses and the residents living in downtown. Those are all so, so important. And so I, I agree that we should lift the curfew now, and also that we are gonna be looking at these daily risk assessments and responding accordingly. Because at the end of the day, we all want justice, we all want our civil liberties. We acknowledge that our black communities are fighting for their right to breathe, to be treated with respect and dignity and fairness. And so I appreciate the tough work, Mayor, that you've had to make in terms of these emergency declarations. And we stand with you to make sure that we're keeping our communities safe, that our protesters have the ability to have a voice in communication about what's happening, as well as keeping our communities and businesses as safe as possible. So I support these, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers On. Deputy Mayor Newenhouse?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a lot of good comments, and I appreciate everybody's perspectives on this. And Kathy, thank you for that overview. And Mayor, I too want to say that I appreciate your, your leadership in this, you know, very unique and unprecedented situation in Bellevue, and certainly appreciate the swift action in coordination with our fine men and women of our Bellevue Police Department to enact a curfew when it was necessary on Sunday. And just in reflecting what's happened since that Sunday, and I think, Councilmember Stokes, it is a balance, and a difficult one to strike perfectly, if that's even possible, as we continue to try and strike that balance between, obviously respecting the first amendment rights to protest, and as well as protecting our residents, or downtown residents specifically in this case, as well as the businesses, et cetera. So, you know, I don't know if there's ever a perfect situation, but I, but I'm very proud of the way senior leadership of the Police Department, as well as the city, and so as our mayor, acted so quickly to do what was right. And also, I'm very much in favor of lifting the, since the credible threats have dissipated, lifting the curfew for, for tonight, and through Saturday's the right thing to do, and continue to do the right thing as the data and the evidence come in. Certainly, we're tracking this, and certainly watching the intelligence as it comes in very, very closely. So if there is no threat, absolutely, we should be doing this, and I'm glad we're doing this. So happy to move forward on these resolutions.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse. I appreciate everybody's comments, and I know this has been a really difficult and challenging time for all of us, and frankly, we are, have all been traumatized by what's gone on in our city. This is entirely unexpected, that during the middle of a COVID crisis, which I thought had already dropped us to our knees, we were taken even lower by the looting that occurred in our city. You know, it's, it's so important that we safeguard the safety of our residents, and our police force, and our businesses, and, and people in our city who are here to protest peacefully. And under advisement of the city attorney, the city manager, and our police chief, these, these things that we're ratifying, these resolutions for curfews that we're ratifying today, is what was advised to be in the best interest of our city. Hindsight is very clear, and, you know, we can look back on this and think of how we, we could have done it better. But I can sincerely tell you, we did it in the best way we could, given the information we had with the goals that we had of keeping people protected. I'm very grateful that we were able to rescind the, the curfew that we were going to have in place for the next few days, because the threat has, has been lowered. I mean, that's excellent news. So it's a good day for me, and I have no other questions or comments, but I think that what we should do is go ahead and have a motion to pass these first three resolutions, which you can name individually, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, so on Resolution 9761, I move to adopt Resolution 9761 ratifying and confirming the civil emergency order imposing curfew of May 31st, 2020.
And let's add the next two resolutions to that.
Oh, okay. I also move to adopt Resolution 9762 ratifying and confirming the second emergency order imposing curfew of June 1st, 2020. And lastly, I move to adopt Resolution 9763 ratifying and confirming the emergency order imposing curfew of June 2nd, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we passed those three resolutions. And now Kathy, why don't you go ahead and discuss the prohibited items?
Oh, thank you. So the remaining two resolutions involve the two emergency orders that were issued by the mayor establishing prohibited items. So the Bellevue City Code authorizes the mayor, again during a proclaimed emergency, to issue orders that prohibit the carrying of instruments that are capable of producing bodily harm, and possessed with the intent to cause harm, and also orders that are imminently necessary for the protection of life and property. And the two prohibited items orders were issued under that authority. So these orders are for the purpose of allowing the Police Department to seize or confiscate items that are intended to be used to cause injury to people or to property before a crime is committed. And so without the orders, the police must wait until a crime is actually committed. So for example, someone uses something to actually, like a bat or something to break a window, before the police can seize the item. And that's absent these orders. So in an emergency, what, what these orders do is they allow the police of people are possessing with the intent to do harm, to actually seize the items before the crime is actually committed and the harm is, is occurs. So Resolution 9764 would ratify and confirm the first of these two orders, which was in effect starting at 10:15 PM on Sunday, May 31st, and stayed in effect until 5:30 PM the next day on June 1st, at which time it was superseded by a second order establishing a prohibited item. And Resolution 9765 would ratify and confirm that second order, which remains in effect today. And this order applies in the downtown area, and given the ongoing threat of looting and property damage to businesses, it also applies in areas that are zoned for commercial or office use in the rest of the city, again, as a tool for the police to protect businesses and people in those areas during the pendency of this emergency. The order prohibits people from possessing certain items in public places, not within their homes or their businesses, that can be used to inflict bodily harm or damage to property if the police determine that the person is possessing the item with the intent to cause harm. So for example, if a father is with a son and has a bat and is going to the park to hit balls, you know, with his son, batting practice with his son, that is not what this order prohibits. On the other hand, if the police identify someone with a bat or another item in circumstances that the police determine that they're about to use it, you know, to break into a building and cause property damage, then the order would allow the police in that circumstance to step in and confiscate the item, and not have to wait until they break into the building in order to do that. Again, the order only applies in public places, such as streets and sidewalks, and it also does not prohibit the lawful possession of firearms. It prohibits the discharge of firearms just in the restricted areas, except consistent with the constitutional right to defend oneself or to defend someone else. So again, Resolution 9764 would ratify and confirm the first order, that was in effect the evening of May 31st, and Resolution 9765 would ratify and confirm the second order establishing prohibited items. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna go in this order, Councilmember Robertson, Councilmember Zon, Councilmember Lee, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, Councilmember Stokes, and Councilmember Barksdale, and then me, starting with Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. I'm supportive of ratifying these two orders. I know we have had some concern from the public about people's ability to defend themselves on their own property, and as the city attorney explained, that is not at all what these applied to. They applied to people in public places. So it didn't keep people who live in the downtown from defending their homes or businesses, being on their own property, defending their businesses. So I'm supportive of this. It's, it's unfortunate that we had to do it, but we need to make sure that we support our police, because a lot of these things weren't just thrown it, thrown through windows, but they were thrown at our officers. So I'm voting yes, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Zon?
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate Kathy for providing that thorough explanation, because I think that there was some confusion about what this ordinance meant. And the more that we explain why, and also what it does and what it does not do, I think it's very helpful for the community to understand. And so I also support this, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm really glad that the city attorney explained in much detail, because there has been some concern, confusion from the public regarding, of course, the Second Amendment rights and so on, and what they, you know, are being asked to do in event of their own protection, security, or the right, you know, to, to be armed. And but as the city attorney explained, you know, I think this is something that the police will definitely, especially, I believe, the city of Bellevue Police, you know, they are well-trained, best of the law enforcement, and they will use discretion, they will make sure that it's only a situation where it's dangerous, and where it potentially can cause harm to other people. And so I think it's very well explained, and I think people would hopefully understand that. And so for that reason, you know, I would think that's a good thing, I would support it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Newenhouse?
Thank you, Mayor. Kathy, thanks again for that great explanation. As my colleagues have pointed out, yes, there had been some, some confusion or some concern about, about this resolution. Again, I think this was another necessary action during an unprecedented event. And again, you know, given the information at the time, certainly, we wanted to take every precaution possible to protect our officers and protect residents. So I'm happy to vote for this and move this forward, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes?
Likewise, it would be helpful in the future. I know, again, things happen real quickly, but there have been some questions asked, and I think it would have been helpful to have an explanation right after the ordinance was passed to council members, so we could understand why. Because I really appreciate the city attorney's explanation of what this all means, so that would help. But yeah, I mean, this is something we had to do, and I think it's very clear, and I'm supportive, and ready to vote for it.
Councilmember Barksdale?
I support this resolution and ready to vote, thank you.
So I just want to thank the council for having confidence in me, and having to make tough decisions. And these are tough decisions to be these are tough decisions, to be sure. And the recommendations from the city attorney, the police chief, the city manager don't come without good cause and reason. And I I'm surprised that the council didn't get more information. I thought that they had, of course, being in the thick of it all, I only knew what I knew. So I think that's a very good point. One thing I didn't say previously is I'm very gratified to know that peaceful protests have continued throughout Bellevue in areas outside of the downtown. So none of this, these resolutions have stopped any peaceful protests at all throughout Bellevue. So with that, Deputy Mayor, would you like to make a motion to pass those two?
My pleasure. I move to adopt Resolution ninety seven sixty four and ninety seven sixty five, ratifying and confirming the civil emergency order establishing prohibited items of May thirty first and June first, twenty twenty.
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your availability tonight and your thoughtful comments. The meeting is adjourned.